All right, good evening. I will call to order the Planning Commission hearing for October 24, 2018. It is 6:05 PM. We have two items on the agenda for this evening. Item three was originally on the agenda. It's been withdrawn. Both items on the agenda this evening are marked with an asterisk. They are legislative in nature, and so we will make recommendations to City Council on those items. And before we get started, I would like to ask Mr. Howard to say the pledge this evening and Ms. Ellsworth the prayer.
Please arise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Our dear, kind Father in heaven, we're thankful for this opportunity to come together as a community, and we're grateful for this wonderful country that we live in and for the great state of Utah. We're thankful that we get to live in Provo in this beautiful climate. We're thankful for each Planning Commissioner and the time that they volunteer. We pray that we can make the best decisions possible and that we can follow all the rules and the law in our proceedings. And please bless each person who speaks that they will feel heard and recognized in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. All right, we'll start with row call. I would like the Commissioners to state their name and whether they have a conflict of interest, starting with Mr. Knutson.
I'm Robert Knudsen, and I have no conflict.
Andrew Howard, no conflict.
Deborah Jensen, no conflict.
Jamin Rowan, no conflict.
Shannon Ellsworth, no conflict.
Thank you, Commissioners. All right, item one this evening. George Bills requests a zone change from Public Facilities PF to Residential Agricultural RA for 5.89 acres located at 1437 East 2300 North in the Rock Canyon neighborhood. And Mr. Ardmore will present this item.
Thank you. So, we had this similar item a month ago. When it went to the council, they sent it back here with a few changes, and I'll cover those. But first to get us familiar with what the property was. So you have 2300 North here. Here's the trailhead for Rock Canyon. This property is currently zoned public facilities, and the request now is to apply the residential agricultural zone to it. The first time you heard it, the request was to apply the agricultural one-acre zone. When it went to council, there were concerns brought up regarding, mostly regarding animal rights with an egg zone and, of course, other agricultural rights. So during that meeting and after that meeting, the applicant decided to change this request to the residential agricultural zone. Council thought it would be best to bring it back to you. What he has proposed this time, it's still the same layout. Nothing with that has changed. He's proposed the residential agricultural zone mostly because he wants to provide the opportunity for a large or larger accessory buildings on the lots. So there'll be three single-family residential lots, and the property owners would like to have the opportunity to build a larger outbuilding for the property. But the applicant has also proffered a development agreement which would restrict all animal rights to those of a residential R1 zone. So he was hoping that would alleviate all the concerns about horses, chickens, any kind of agriculture uses. Those would not be permitted due to the development agreement. So it essentially acts like a large R1 zone in that no agricultural rights will be given to those properties. So this applies to this land, and staff has reviewed this request, and just like in the past, we feel this is a good plan for the area. We feel the layout and the density matches the surrounding area, and it's a good buffer as you get towards Rock Canyon Trailhead and more of the open space of the Provo city. And we would recommend that this move forward with a positive recommendation to City Council. Also, what has been handed out to you just now is an email from the neighborhood chair. The neighborhood chair was at the last council meeting and has been made aware of these proposals and supports this idea of RA zone and development agreement to restrict those animal rights.
So the staff thought that the RA zone was a good solution for a couple reasons. Number one, the RA zone wouldn't necessitate having to amend the general plan. When the general plan calls for this to be residential and to make it agricultural, we'd have to amend the general plan. So it negates that need. Also, if you look around the city, we've got at least 23 RA zones that are immediately adjacent to R18 or R110 zoning. So it's very much in keeping with what has been done around the city for many years. It seems to be consistent with that.
Commissioners, any questions for staff? Mr. Howard?
Are there any geological issues with the site?
There are several geological issues, but they've been addressed in the site layout. Nothing has changed from the last time with that.
Thank you.
Can you define agricultural animal rights? Does that mean, yes, horses, no cows, no horses? Or what does that look like?
Sure. So the past request was the A1 zone, which would allow horses, cows, livestock, farming, all of these things, all variety of livestock. With this request, the development agreement specifically says, we can go to that.
So even in the RA zone, you would have some animal rights, farm animal rights?
Correct.
So this then takes away the animal rights of both the agricultural zone and an RA zone, so PAGRAF 4A.
Right there. So it just makes it consistent with R1, right? So you can still have cats and dogs and other things that the R1 zone would permit.
And is it possible for, right now we're showing three lots, under this change, would it be possible to subdivide and have more lots for development?
Technically, yes. So the RA is different in the A in that it allows half-acre lots. However, the builder and the owner and the applicant have expressed that they only want the three lots. They don't want more than that. Also, with the geological hazards, it would pose some difficulties to, once these three lots are built, to adding more with the layout that they propose.
The last page of the development agreement is the final plat. It's the last exhibit. So that exhibit, when we get the final plat already, it will be attached to this and recorded. So if a future owner wants to subdivide further, they're going to have to go back and renegotiate the development agreement with the City Council because it'll be attached to this.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for staff at this time? If not, I'd like to invite the applicant, Mr. Bills. And please state your name for the record.
My name's Dave Gardner, 724 North, 1890 West, Provo. I really don't have anything to add. I think the staff has covered the issue. If you have any questions, happy to try and answer those.
Commissioners, any questions? All right, thank you so much. All right, I'd like to open it up for public comment then. At this time, are there any neighborhood chairs from Rock Canyon neighborhood who would like to speak to this item? Are there any other neighborhood chairs present who would like to speak to this item? Are there any members of the public who would like to speak to this item? Please come forward and state your name, and I believe we have a sign-in sheet as well, if you would be so kind to sign in as well.
My name is James Patrick Kelly. I've been a resident of 1430 East, which is the little road in front of this property, for 21 years. Let me sign in. I have a question about what is the difference between a residential agricultural rating and residential? Why are they asking for the residential agriculture?
Mr. Ardmore?
If I can, I could address that. The main difference that the applicant has chosen that instead of R1 is with the R1 zone, your outbuilding or accessory building cannot be larger than the main dwelling. In the RA zone, that is not the case. So if they wanted to build a large garage to hold different things, they would be able to in the RA zone.
How is that size measured? Is it square footage or height?
It is square footage and height, actually.
And what do they plan to build?
You'd have to ask the applicant or the owners that.
Can we ask that question before we oppose it?
We'll take public input, and then the applicant will come up and address your questions.
Okay, so I would just like to know the difference between residential property and residential agriculture. You're telling me it's the ability to build a building bigger than the homes that are built on that lot? And how many buildings do they plan to build? So each home will have a separate big building?
Again, I would defer to the applicant.
We can note that question, and then we'll ask the applicant to respond to that.
Can we do that first?
We're going to take all the public input first.
Having big residences there on three lots, I think as a resident, I would not oppose that. I'm not excited about having a big barn or a multi-level building built that is, and if this is an agricultural resident, why not just have it be residential and confine them to all the rules that the people that are to the south of that property have? So I would support a residential zoning, not an agricultural RA zoning.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Are there any other members of the public present who would like to speak to this item? And please state your name and sign in for the record.
My name is Don Kimball. I live in the condominiums that are on 2300 North. I had a question on the map. Like on Lot Number Two, I believe the cross-hatched areas are earthquake zones. Is that what that is? If you look, well, they're not, they don't have the diagonal on this picture.
Those are fault zones, fault lines.
Well, anyway, on Lot Number Two, there's a large part of that that has this, oh, I see it there, yeah. As a planning zone, would you want to divide that into four lots if the owner of Lot Two later, five years, 10 years from now, decided he wanted to subdivide with, but with all that area that's really in a, am I correct that that's a fault zone area? Would you want to divide that into four lots and have four houses on there?
I think he addressed that earlier, sir, saying that this plat will be recorded, and if that were to happen, it would have to come back through the process. So as it's proposed now, it's not an option. Is that right?
I understand that. He's not proposing it now.
Right.
Right.
But if you're still the same people that are here, the planning zone, five years from now, would you think that would be a good idea?
I think it may be very difficult to subdivide any farther because of the seismic zones there. They restrict building residences on those sites.
Okay, so that's what a normal person would think. Is that what I'm saying, you're saying?
That's the code as I understand it to be, that you're not allowed to build a structure on a seismic fault. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ellis Nuttall. We own the property that's just in front of the furthest east area there. We talked about the outbuildings and that they may be large in size. I'm not as much concerned about the width and the length of the buildings, but rather the height, because one of the nice things about living there is we have a really nice view of Depanogus and other things. So if someone were to build a huge barn, that might kind of diminish the nice view that we get from there, if you understand what I mean. That may not sound very important, but I think it's one of the reasons we bought the property, to have that. And so I guess my question is for, are there any height restrictions at all that are imposed on this or any, any kind of, or any zoning, I guess?
Mr. Ardmore?
Yes, there's a height restriction of 35 feet.
35 feet, that's pretty high.
It's the same in our one zone.
I see. Okay. So I guess that's the concern that I have, and I'd be a little surprised if some of the others don't have the same concern. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Dr. Howard R. Francis. Together with Jim Kopp, a good friend, we developed the property just across the street where all of us now live. We had mules and horses at the time in the county. We were requested to get rid of the mules so we'd have less problem with odor and with flies, and we acquiesced and did so, and have lived happily ever since. I would suggest that we keep this zoning subject property residential only. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak to this?
Good evening. My name is Martha Cox Ballantyne, and I own what's commonly known as the Kimball House on the top of a point which is on the southeast upper level of this area. I heard you say dogs and cats and other things. What are the other things that would necessitate a 32-high outbuilding bigger than a big house?
They'd be restricted to what is permitted in a R1 zone.
Which is?
Pets.
So I'm concerned that, why would anybody need a great big outbuilding, maybe for a yacht, maybe for a tractor, but you're not growing anything, so why a tractor? Why would you need this big outbuilding? Maybe Mr. Bills could address that. Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public who would like to address this item?
No, I'm Carol Hendricks, and I'm sorry, I haven't heard everything that's been said, but I'd like to go on record as saying that this property that now has been sold is totally surrounded by residential homes only. And I think it's important for everyone to understand that if they want to build another building for storage or whatever it is, that the Cambridge Court and the park itself and all on the other side, the south side, are all homes, nice homes. And I don't think we need a huge structure there to accommodate whatever their personal needs are, because it is a community and a neighborhood and a very lovely one. That 2300 is a very busy street going into Rock Canyon, and it should be used, and the city has spent a lot of money on purchasing Rock Canyon and making the entrance beautiful, and the surrounding homes are beautiful. And I know that these three homes will be fine and beautiful, but any other structure that might detract, not only in the use of the cars not only in the use of the cars and whatever, I think has to be a deciding factor in what goes on there and how it's used. And I know some of the people who have bought some of these places or this piece of property, they have huge homes, huge lots, they can build anything they want on it. But those of us who live in this area and keep nice care of it and allow it to be a beautiful area, we would like to maintain that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Kelly?
Yes, another question. It sounds to me like three members of a family are going to have these three lots. Or will each individual family have the right to build a building that's bigger than their home? So there could be three large buildings in addition to the three homes?
For the zoning, that would be permitted. You have to ask the representative if that's what they intend.
What are they intent?
After we close public comment, then he will come back up to address these items.
Okay, couldn't you put a helicopter port in there? That's against zoning. What kind of things can you put in the building? Can you have gasoline storage there? In a residential area?
That would come in the fire code, and I'll have a copy of the fire code with me as to the zoning ordinance.
So I can't answer that question.
Okay, so this building could have many other uses than just storage?
If you'd like, when you finish making your comments, I'll come down and I'll show you the code itself and see you can read exactly what's allowed and what's not allowed.
Okay. Could a reception center be built in this building?
No.
So it would be only for the use of the families, families or family that has the property?
Yes, I guess religious activities are allowed in all of our residential zones. So I guess somebody could build a church, but they could do that in your zone and in your neighborhood, too. That would be about the biggest building you could do under the zone.
Okay, and no other questions?
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else with the public who would like to speak to this item?
I'm sorry, I'm not from here. I don't know the planning board's procedure. Can we ask questions after Mr. Bills makes his presentation?
We're taking all the public comment now, yes.
We don't know what to ask exactly, but thank you.
Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak to this item? If not, we will close this to public comment at this time and invite the applicant, Mr. Gardner, to address any of those concerns that you heard expressed.
First of all, there's not enough room on only lot one and three to have a big building here and here. This starts narrowing down because of the fault lines that run there and there. I guess you can build some buildings that are not human habitation over a fault line. I'm not sure what those are. I don't know what they might want to build. And I don't know if it's going to end up being the family members of the current owners. That's what we've been told, but things change. I've been told that they would like a building where they could put cars and maybe a boat, those type of things. They just didn't want to be restricted on the size of that. They're not going to be huge buildings, but I don't know unless we included in the development agreement a height more restrictive than the R110 zone that we would be able to satisfy the neighbors' concerns. I wish I had more definitive plans, but we're still very early in the process. So I don't know what to tell you.
Commissioners, any questions? Mr. Rowland?
Is there a way, I mean, the question I think is at the root of a lot of the residents' questions is why residential agriculture rather than an R1-whatever zone? And for you, as far as you understand, it's the same as what we've already heard from city staff, which is that they didn't want to be restricted on the size of a kind of outbuilding, a garage. They want to be able to build a structure big enough to house a boat, let's say, or multiple cars. And that's the only reason why they are requesting residential agriculture versus an R1-3 or, you know, R1-whatever it is.
R110 would probably be. Yeah, the property is, these are going to be really huge lots. We did make the minor adjustment to make all the lots 1.9-something acres. So they're all exactly the same. And I think that the amount of landscaping and attention into the lots themselves, it's going to be a nice setting. This is not going to be something unsightly. So, and I guess they were just thinking that if they wanted to do an indoor swimming pool, but not in the house, that they would be able to do that. I don't, because I honestly don't know. They've talked about several different things. And we've been party to some of those conversations and just hearsay to others. So I wish I had a better answer. That would probably make you feel more comfortable, but I don't.
So more than likely, they're, the intent of these accessory buildings is to do something like house RVs and boats and cars, if somebody has several cars. Maybe have an indoor swimming pool enclosed, maybe have a bowling alley, something. But something that is ancillary to the main residence.
Volleyball, squash, basketball.
Personal gym.
Tennis courts.
Indoor. That's, yes.
Nothing nefarious, as far as you're aware?
I can assure you that, nothing nefarious.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you. All right, at this time, I'll turn it back over to the commissioners for any other questions for staff or discussion or motion. Mr. Howard?
You say in the presentation that RA zones are common as a transition area around the city. Can you elaborate a little bit on that?
Specifically, out on the west side, you'll see where you've got old farmland and you've got newer subdivisions. There's still, there's RA, whether they're remnants or as a buffer, there's RA all over the place on the west side adjacent to R1 zones. But the use of the land is primarily the same. It's just a different zone.
There are also quite a few RA zones up Canyon Road and right up into this neighborhood in northeast Provo. The RA zone is kind of a halfway zone between agriculture that was there previously and the residential zones of R18 and R110. That's why you see them so often right up against the R18 and R110 zoning. Staff thought this was a good way to basically split the baby in half based on the concerns that were raised by the neighborhood chair and the residents at the city council meeting. This seemed, this zone, in addition to them waiving animal rights, seemed to address the concerns. This one about building height and an accessory building being too big, this is a new concern that wasn't raised at the city council.
Is the square footage of an accessory building, is it required to be less than that of the main residential structure?
In a R1 zone, it says it cannot be larger than the primary structure, yes.
Ms. Ellsworth?
What's the zone of the property immediately west?
R110, just for the record. We all see it on the map.
And Cambridge Court was a planned development?
So the specific code in the R1 zone, under building height, states in a subparagraph that the building height of an accessory building cannot be greater than that of the principal building. That same code is not present in the RA zone.
So it could be bigger, but still no bigger, no, no higher than 35 feet?
That's correct.
No, no, no. What you said is not what Aaron said. So in the R1 zones, there's a specific provision that says the accessory building cannot be taller than the house.
Right.
That specific requirement, provision, restriction is not in the RA zone. Now, in the RA zone, it does say that the accessory building needs to be incidental to the main building. So to me, that would suggest that it's not bigger than the main building, but that's inferred. It's not emphatic like it is in the R1 zones.
But there, so, but is there, in the RA zone, is there a height limit to either? So, so my statement was correct? Which, the accessory building could be taller than the main, the residential building, but it could not exceed 35 feet?
Right.
Gotcha. Okay. All right. Any other discussion, commissioners? Questions? Motions?
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion. I would like to have the planning commission recommend to the council a zone change from public facilities to residential agriculture for 5.89 acres located at 1437 east, 2300 north, in the Rock Canyon neighborhood, pursuant to the recommendations of staff.
Thank you, Mr. Howard.
Do we need to explicitly include in the motion the inclusion of the development agreement or?
Oh, yes. Yes. And restrictions on animal rights.
Okay, so let me just restate that.
Thank you.
If I can. So the motion for Mr. Howard is to forward a positive recommendation to municipal council for item one with the additional conditions of a development agreement, which includes a restriction on agricultural animals. Okay, do we have a second on that motion? Seconded by Mr. Knutson. All those in favor of forwarding a positive recommendation on item one to municipal council?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we will forward a positive recommendation on item one to municipal council on item one. Okay, and there's only one other item on the agenda for this evening, item two. Provo City Public Works Department requests amendments to section 15.03.020 (3), to update the 2018 standards to 2019 standards. This has citywide impact. And will be presented by Josh Yost.
Thank you. As we were not able to review the proposed 2019 standards as staff prior to the deadline for issuing a staff report, David Day from Public Works has requested to come before you and just preliminarily present these and offer you an opportunity to discuss with him what the standards, what the proposed standards. And then we have them now and we'll be reviewing them, preparing a staff report for the next meeting based on your input.
Thank you. Is Mr. Day present?
Thank you. My name is David Day. I'm with Provo City Public Works. And I'd like to thank you for listening to me tonight, even though there's a pending baseball game. So just real quickly, there's about, well, about 13 drawings that have changed with edits and one additional drawing that we've added. But as of today, I've been sent three more additional drawings and one more change. So I'll try to show you those tonight so that you can kind of get a feel for what we're doing here. If you look at the display, or maybe you can see it on yours, what this is, is an overlay of red on top of green of an old drawing and the new drawing. So you can kind of see what the old one and the new one look like when they're laid on top of each other. So the next page, though, is a clean copy of what it looks like with the changes made. So most of these ones that are changed are just changed to try to make it clearer and more readable and understandable for someone who's doing the work or designing stuff. So this one was just to try to clarify when we're doing a bore in the right of way, the clearances between utilities. And we'd had a few boring companies that say, well, you don't have a standard that tells us we have to do that. And so hence a new drawing, so. If you have questions on any, they stop me because I'm just going to go through them real quick.
Let me, let me stop you.
What's that?
Let me stop you. Is that for like any kind of utility or water, wastewater or fiber? Or what kind of utilities are we looking at?
This one's mainly for communications.
Okay.
Yeah.
Those are the, these are the drawings for communications?
Yes.
Okay.
So this next one is another one. It's entitled directional bore, but that's 99% communications. So occasionally, you'll have somebody try to do something else with the directional bore. But for the most part, this is communications. And so this drawing is just another drawing to try to clarify what we want to see them do. And this one, this one here is a result of the boring companies boring through sewer laterals. And then they, they leave town, right? And then in a month later, the person who owns the home is like, hey, my sewer's backing up because the lateral will hold a certain amount. because the lateral will hold a certain amount." And, and then they're gone, and and then we get a call and say, "Hey, something's wrong." We go out and we spend a lot of time. We find out, oh, the boring company that was doing that work went through the sewer lateral, and now we have to go find them, and and so this, this gives us the ability to say, "This is what we want you to do. If you don't do it, it's clearly your liability to fix the sewer."
And these drawings are based on sound engineering, feedback, experience?
Yes.
All that good stuff, because frankly, I would have to take your word for all this stuff.
So, that's just supposed to be kind of a picture of a bore, but it's not really what they look like, but and then they drive that shaft down through the ground and back up. It, it, it's, it's just a really simple drawing. It doesn't really show what it's, looks like in real life. Because that's a rigid shaft. More likely, it comes straight, and then, and it makes an arc. But we don't like those arcs either, because we want them to be about 30 inches to three feet deep, and they'll start at zero and do a big loop. Pretty soon, they're eight feet deep, and then they're back up to, to zero again, and we want them to go down flat now.
This'll clear up your issues, though. That's, that's why we're doing this.
Yeah. That's what this drawing's for. You go to the next. So this, these ones will probably make you go to sleep, but this is just our inlet boxes that collect our stormwater. There is a bunch of text changes, and you can kind of see those overlaid on top of each other, and then the clean copy. Some of them look worse than they are, because the, the text doesn't line up perfectly with the, the new drawing and the old one, but can you go to the next one? The same drawing, just a little variation. And then there's the clean copy. So this was A, B, and C, and then the third one has those, pretty much the same identical text changes as the first two, and then a clean copy of, of that one. And then, the next one, D, which is a double hooded inlet, and then the clean copy. The next drawing is a combo box. The only change to this one is, if you look down at the, towards the bottom, it says special use only. We don't really want people to use this as their first option. It's only if it meets certain criteria, so we're wanting them to get us to say, "Yeah, it's okay to use it." They don't just use it without talking to us, so. That's all the change on that one. Our sump, this would be a, where the stormwater would just kind of go into the ground. We did some changes on there. We have the water quality device on it with the, one of the devices is called a snout, so that's added on there, and then a little bit other text change, so. And then the clean copy of that. We don't use those a whole lot anymore because of water quality, but. So the next one is another special use only. This particular one has been replaced with, just in the last day, I got another revision to this with an A, B, and C. So, I'll show those to you in a minute, so. They're not a lot different. Here, here's the, the driveways and slopes from the property down to the driveway, so there was a few changes made to that. If you go to the next drawing, it shows the clean copy. We just, the main change on here is we have our standard in the city is a seven-foot planter, a six-foot sidewalk. And that was the main change that we did, just to make it more congruent with our standard. This next one, yeah, go back up, Josh, sorry. The the highlighted change there is covered up by the highlight. But it's just adding another, one more fire hydrant brand to the approved list. It's a East Jordan Ironworks Fire Hydrant. That was the only change to that sheet.
Can I ask you a question about the previous one?
Sure.
Why is it a best practice to have sidewalks that are six feet and planters that are seven feet?
Why is what?
Why do we have six feet of sidewalk and seven feet of planter? Where do we get numbers like that?
That has been around for about 20 years, and it was a the, the six-foot walk is to comply with ADA in in almost every instance. The seven-foot planter was a number that our parks and our arborist folks gave us for a, a space that would support a tree. And that seven-foot planter was not our requirement in public works. We were looking to other people to determine that width.
Gotcha. Would it be controversial to do seven feet of sidewalk and six or less feet of planter?
Probably could, based on what, you know, what's good health for a tree.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And, for instance, in our downtown zone, we have an eight-foot sidewalk and a five-foot planter, but that planter has the tree grates and the permeable pavers.
Yeah.
More of an urban.
Yeah. I'd always be in favor of a little bit wider sidewalk for pedestrian comfort, and and I guess we needed to defer to arborists on, on those planters, because I noticed on University, some of them look like they're three feet or two feet wide, but they planted a ginkgo tree, which becomes huge, like as big as those sycamores on Center Street. So I, I wonder if we're going to create problems for ourselves, but it was probably UDOT's design, right, in large part?
Probably your questioning of some of that is our same question.
Okay.
We don't, we haven't had a lot of control over what's happened on that project, so we're anyway, it's probably not a good one to use as a test. Well, it is in certain circumstances to use as a test case of maybe our inability to to get things that we normally get, so. This one was mostly just addressing some stormwater issues, so that, that one's pretty much the same as the old one. This is the fire hydrant. Then the next one. Really, the only change, and it's covered up again, I apologize for that, is that we changed the, the, the size of this water lateral from the main to the meter is just a one-inch line. And then, the, the size of the meter is determined just by the meter itself. We used to allow a three-quarter inch either way, but what we've found with the poly pipe is so economical versus the copper, most everybody's putting in poly pipe now. And there's really no cost difference between an inch and a three-quarter, yet if a person wants to have more water, all they have to do is change out their meter setter. So, this, this really is no cost change, just provides flexibility to a homeowner in the future, so. The next one is just the text of, of that. Oh, actually, no, that's, this is the it goes with another drawing. But it's specifying that the tracer wire that's put in, in a water main has to be tested prior to a paving operation. We've had a few projects paved, and then they go and do tests, the tracer wider, and it's like, oh, it's not hooked up, and then we end up having to dig up a newly paved road to fix that, so. And then that the GPS is done. Anyway, those are just text changes, so that, that's pretty simple. And that's the clean copy of that same page. And, I think, is that the end of them? Okay. And then here, here's just the full thing. You probably don't need to look through this. This is just a clean copy of what we're proposing. However, with the changes that I've got right now, there's probably going to be about four of these pages that get pulled out, and a new one gets put in.
This has gone through your entire department. I see the signature lines right there, so it's, it's had a review, and competent people have reviewed this.
Yes, yes. And, and for the most part, there's 112 pages here, and we're asking to revise, you know, 14 of them, I guess, would be total of 14 now, and, and, and putting four new ones in, so. Pretty minor. Back when we first started doing this, we were having like 20 and 30 new drawings until we got it built up to where where we've got it now, so. Josh, can you go to that? There's a three, the 300s that are kind of all by theirself. So, this is that 392 that I mentioned that has three drawings associated with it now. So we'll be inserting that in its place. And there's, there's B. And then there's the text that goes with those two drawings. Can you go back to one of those? These are a storm drain lot drain, so if, if somebody lives in a, like a high groundwater area, and the developer has put in a storm drain system that's adequate for to drain the groundwater out from around, or or even surface water from around the home to keep any of that structure dry. This is a detail that they've come up with to accommodate that. One of the things that I see right now is there's too many clean outs, so this one will most likely change before you see it again. So, anyway. We've, we've had a, kind of a learning curve with deadlines. You know, what is a deadline? Our deadline was like, two weeks ago, and I even got just an email before I stood up of one more drawing, so. We're beyond the deadline, right? Oh, can we get this? Everybody panics when they know it's too late. The other thing that we're proposing a change on is our design guidelines. I don't know if you see that on that folder. It's a draft design guideline. So this used to be about a 33-page document, and if you scroll right to the end, page, like page 17 is where the changes start. Our, our water resources folks went and, from page 17 to, that's all of the water, and then to like, page 28 would be the, through the sewer. This used to be three pages, now it's 11. So that's the change, and I just highlighted it all in red, because it got really complicated trying to show what was new and what was old, because it was mostly all new, so I just showed it all as new. They, they've moved a bunch of their specs into this design guideline. And so, that's, that's the change there. It's all real technical stuff. We, you know, you can read through it if you have any questions.
I'll take your word for it, to be honest with you.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty specific. I think that's all of the stuff that we've proposed as changes right now. The one, the one, one of the things that's, that's missing is changes to the cross-section of our streets. And I know we've talked about that before in planning commission discussions. That'll be coming to you with part of the process of the Transportation Master Plan. And so, they, they, they're working on some really good visual drawings that show the street cross-sections, and then you know, we can talk about how to divide that right of way up, whether it needs to be narrower, larger, you know, asphalt that's bigger, smaller. But we felt like that was probably a better discussion to have with that Transportation Master Plan group than with our, our specs, so. We've left those the same for now, but I think they're scheduled I'm thinking in November, but I'm not sure. I'll have to check on that. The other, the other thing that we discussed at one of our previous planning commission meetings was the sewer study. I've seen a couple versions of that. They're they're almost done with that. I asked them, I said, "I need to get that there, to get that to this meeting, to you guys tonight." But they didn't have it quite ready, and it's probably going to be another week or so. They'll probably show it to the council first, and, and then to you folks, so.
Is that both stormwater and sanitary sewer?
Just the sanitary sewer. And it, at first, it started the west side, but they've expanded it to the whole city, and they've actually found a few little isolated places in other parts of the city that they've got problems. But they now have projects planned to fix those problems, so.
I just have one.
That's all I had. I don't know if you had any questions, or I'll, I'll, I'll get those other drawings put into this and to Josh, and highlight it as these are changes to the last year's spec.
I had just one question about, it would probably go back to the street sections and stormwater management. Is there any will on the part of Provo City to employ any kind of sustainable stormwater management practices?
Yeah, like low-impact stormwater. Yeah, I, I didn't mention that our, our stormwater folks are getting close to having their stormwater master plan ready to take to, to you guys and to the council, and kind of mandated by the EPA and the state of Utah is having options for the low-impact developments, and low-impact from a, a stormwater standpoint. So you should be seeing something along that line, and then we'd have to go back and update our, our cross-section to show that as an option also.
Great, thank you.
We, we have a lot of, you know, master plans that are coming through, so hopefully I'll be able to see some of the we'll be able to see some of the work that's being done. Takes quite a while to, to work that through to, to the point where you see it.
So David, the next city council meeting will be on the thirteenth, and the next Planning Commission meeting will be on the fourteenth.
Oh, that would actually work well, wouldn't it? So the council would see it on the thirteenth, you'd see it on the fourteenth.
So do the commissioners need to make a motion to continue this to the fourteenth? Or is it?
I think you should, yes. I mean, it was, it was shown as continued on the agenda, but I think you should make that motion.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Day first? No, thank you.
Thank you.
So we're looking for a motion to continue this until the November fourteenth Planning Commission hearing. Would anyone like to make that motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we continue this item, the public works standards, to the next Planning Commission meeting on the fourteenth of November.
Do we have a second for that motion? Seconded by Mr. Knutson, all those in favor of continuing item two to November fourteenth?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is continued then until November fourteenth. Thank you. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
Motion by Ms. Ellsworth, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Howard. So adjourned.